To call to order the Hopewell Area School District Board Business Meeting. May we have prayer and pledge allegiance, Dr. Miller?
Dear Lord, thank you for gathering our school leaders together this evening so that we can serve our community, our school district, but most importantly, our students. Please watch over our students and their families now and always, and please help guide our decision-making this evening. Please watch over our community and school district, and in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. At this time, we would have good news from our schools, and here they come. Oh, I'm sorry. May we have forecall Mrs. Barber?
Mr. Cate?
Here.
Mrs. Dobbo?
Here.
Dr. Erickson?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Mr. Newberry?
Here.
Mrs. Dobala?
Here.
Mr. Santia?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Good evening. Good evening.
It's on.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Rob Cartech from Hopewell Elementary Schools. Some different things that are going on, going on in all of our buildings. Our fourth graders recently had spelling bees. They will compete Saturday, March 7th at Robert Morris. Our representatives from Hopewell Elementary are Tyler Litzinger and Independence, Landon Nelson, and Margaret Ross Esma Husig. Our three elementary buildings are also coming together to do One School, One Book. We haven't released the title yet, but all three buildings will be reading it together. Special thanks to the Independents and Hopewell PTA for funding the One School, One Book program in that building, and at Margaret Ross, there was a grant and PTA funded the rest. Special thanks to the following teachers, Olivia White, Tony O'Brien, and Anna Kostrop for kind of spearheading those efforts. And our Vikings of the Month at Hopewell Elementary, we have Eva Kakhondi and Damian Prinat. At Independence, Abby Meyer and Devin Kelly. And at Margaret Ross, Marlon Marlat and Thomas Carina. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heidi Babb, Assistant Assistant Principal at the Junior High School. I would like to highlight that we just finished our Engineering Week where we invited over twenty engineers from Aiken Corporation. They served all seven hundred of our students in grades five through eight in all of the science classes. We have currently two national qualifiers that are heading to Atlanta, Georgia for academic games. Eighth graders Owen Gruber and Ethan Pletcher. Our Hopewell Robotics Club, which is a club for grades five through eight, we sent eight different teams. Five out of our eight teams qualified, and three of our teams took the first three places. Finally, four of our seventh and eighth grade students went to PME A Chorus Fest in January, and fourteen of our fifth and sixth graders will be heading there in April. Thanks.
And good evening. I'm Mike Allison, I'm the High School Principal. Some good news from the high school. A lot of this is sports-related tonight because we're in playoff season. Congratulations, first of all, to Cara DiNardo. Cara was recently awarded a $1,000 scholarship by the Beaver County Sports Hall of Fame. Our MAC Bowling Tournament, Taylor Gozer was awarded the high game and high series for the girls. Taylor placed first again for this year in our section, and Taylor Gozer was also named the MVP for the WPIAL Bowling Northwest Region Girls. Zachary Caruso also qualified for the WPIAL Championship. I'm sorry, WPIBL, Western Pennsylvania Bowling League. Our Hopewell Gymnas placed the WPIAL Championships. Megan Kelly was first in the floor exercise in the gold division, and Molly Rose was third on the vault in the silver division. On Saturday night, our girls gymnastics team won the second-place silver award at the PA Classic Gymnastics Championship. Also, we have six swimmers who will be competing at the Whipple's this week. Rosie McGrail, Madison Kecksmur, Mason Kecksmur, Gabby Webster, Gian Arida, Sharice McLean, and Pat Loznek. They will all be competing in the Whipple Championships, so congratulations to them. And our varsity wrestlers placed in the PIAA Southwest Regionals. That was Alex Obel Doble and Juan Lockett, who wrestles with us. He's an Al Kupa student, and we have a co-op for wrestling. That's it for the high school. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. Before we begin, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Lisa Dobbo, and I am the President of the Hopewell Area School Board. Before we begin, the Board of School Directors want to share some of our collective thoughts as we are faced with the decision to transition fourth grade to the junior high. First, thank you. We appreciate that parents have been so involved. We are aware of the petition circulating pertaining to the potential fourth grade transition, and we have also received your emails and have taken them all seriously. We appreciate your reaching out to many of us and having an open and sincere dialogue. It is wonderful to see so many parents that are concerned about their children and the decisions that are made by the school district. Second, we are elected to make the best decisions for the school district, including all of our current and future students. Each one of us is connected to the district in a personal and meaningful way. We ran for school board because we deeply care about our children. We deeply care. Many of us have children that attend the district, grandchildren that attend the district, and those of our own children that have graduated. We have many on our board that are Hopewell alumni. We are neighbors, friends, with families, with children in our schools. Some of us are proud graduates. Some of them are proud graduates of Hopewell. With that being said, we have taken our third-grade parents' perspective to heart as your concerns are our concerns. The Board of Directors, over the next several years, as many of you know from our recent presentations, we have growing enrollment in aging facilities. Although these represent challenges, those issues also provide the district with many opportunities for our children. The fourth grade transition is one of these difficult decisions. Although we share some of your same concerns, we also feel that the potential transition provides great potential for opportunity for them as well. However, in light of the feedback we have received from the community over the past several weeks, the Board of School Directors plan to postpone tonight's motion to transition the fourth grade to the junior high. To the meeting scheduled for March 9th, we have our administration to provide more specific plans to address many of the questions raised by the community, and to prepare a comprehensive presentation in order to address these items together. We plan to hear this presentation on the March 9th meeting and vote on the potential fourth grade transition at that time. Once again, thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your ideas and your feedback and your concerns. It's been very valuable. Thank you. Okay, moving on with our meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the reorganization meeting, December 9th, regular business meeting, January 27th, and regular work meeting, February 10th.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports, the tax collection, treasurer's report of January 2020, and the financial statements from 2020? Do I hear a second? Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? At this time, we would hear from visitors this evening. We'll be capturing your questions this evening. Dr. Miller will be actually capturing them, and... So... Okay.
For those who don't know me, my name is Bethany Mestorius, and I am the author and creator of the petition. I did not do this solely from my own opinion. I collected opinions from no less than twenty-five parents from all three elementary schools and the junior high before going forward with what I did. I would like to provide you each with your own copy so that you have a hard copy. I did email everybody a link to the petition as well as an emailed copy. I also emailed you all PDFs of the signatures up to that point, as well as PDFs of the comments. I have approximately five copies of the five hundred and seventy signatures as of 6:00 PM. At this time, I'm very grateful that you guys are agreeing to delay the vote. I think that we need a better plan and a fully-realized plan. However, I am concerned that we're going to have this presentation on the 9th, and then you're immediately going to vote. I don't understand how that can have full discrepancy. Also, the issue of kindergarten registration, it starts on March 9th. If you're going to utilize that number, then you need that number, and you can't get it by the 9th. So, that's my spiel.
Thank you.
I would also like to know exactly what you're going to do between now and the 9th to come up with more details and more complicated plans. Like, what is the time going to buy up those meetings?
So, I can, I can share that we're taking, we're reviewing all of the questions that have been presented to us. We're going to take everything that you're asking tonight. I think that we have heard that you want more specifics, and so we're going to realize those specifics, present those to you. So, we have several meetings planned over the next few weeks to make sure that we have all of that for you. So, many meetings and getting you the details that we have heard that parents are asking for.
Actually, I want to comment on something. I just want to make a comment on the legislative adoption of college charter school funding reform. Is that supporting the governor's initiative?
It is in line with what PSBA is recommending, and so it is looking at the bills that are currently there to support more of the fair funding for charter school.
I agree that, I agree that funding needs to be looked at, but as the governor has stated, as his warning before, it hurts kids, treats kids as second-class citizens. All the kids at this school are supposed to fail, but have to go to charter schools. It's failing that. And I think supporting any of the governor's support is going against children to live in this school district and our parents to pay taxes. And it's very disheartening that anybody would support that. Thank you.
Would I ask you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Vivian Lombard, and my children are currently at twins in ninth grade. In the last decade, they've been to Hopewell Elementary, just left the junior high this past year. I was very involved with PTA and PTSA. I think it would be hard for us to find anybody in this room that has spent as much time in the schools, not just during school hours, but after hours in the summer, than I. I have a unique perspective. I do not think that what we're going up to the junior high is going to be. I do not agree with it. I think our children are too young. I understand you're coming up with plans, how we can segregate them. The reality is, we can't completely segregate the children. I have been in the school. I know what happens. I know, you talk about on the buses, segregating by grades on the buses works in elementary because the elementary kids are more likely to try and be separated. You put the younger kids with the bigger kids, and they're trying to do what the bigger kids do, even if they're not going to attend the bus. Now, you're also talking, well, we'll have activities for clubs and being in chorus. That's wonderful, but you're telling us to keep them away from the kids, and you put them in clubs and in classes with the bigger kids. You can't have it both ways. It's one or the other. It's either going to be separate from them or not. Also, excuse me. The fact that you're going to have them start at eight, have lunch at one, some of the ones from India coming out, going to have breakfast at six o'clock in the morning. Who's providing snacks for the children? Because I guarantee academic performance as well as behavior is going to suffer if they have to wait six, seven hours to eat. You're also talking about recess. Recession is not going to be like it is in elementary. Elementary parents think recess, we think playground. They will not have that here at the junior high. What will happen is, I believe the plan was, is after lunch, just go on to lunch and go outside if they can, without a gymnasium not being used. What's going to happen is, we're going to have space up here by the picnic tables, maybe at the front of the school, have some of the grass, and maybe the tennis courts, up until construction starts. Once construction starts, you're not going to want them that far, which means less kids are going to be getting outside. They don't have time during that time to go down to Margaret Field between us and Margaret Ross. Five minutes down, five minutes back, if you're lucky, they have ten minutes to play, and that's only if you actually have supervised coverage. It will not happen. Fourth grade up here, special ed will have to be more staffing up here, not just parent professionals, but our special ed teachers, because they'll be taking up more time developing and rewriting IDPs, as well as attending IEP meetings, taking away from extra group of specialized curriculum aid they have for some of the students, as well as support study halls. The one-to-one technology is a great idea, and we do need our students to be able to be technologically savage, savvy. I'm sorry about that. I hope you're planning on also adding some social emotional learning in there because studies are already there showing that you have increased higher cultural reactivity, as well as decreased social awareness that they get to play, which is the recess portion. Let's see, new building should have a fourth grade in it. It should not be here. It should be separate. Building, new building, if you need another floor to put, fourth grade in it, building up the floor. Do it at that height. I believe a best option would be, and some of the parents may disagree with me because it will affect the two counts, Margaret Ross, for the next short term, while you're building the new building or build digs, Margaret Ross should be kindergarten only and head strong. Move the busing lines, the cutoffs, to the students of Margaret Ross and Kane Road, who take up some space in the... If it actually goes on only three years, you should be okay. If construction goes longer than four years, you might have to actually do a three-floor building and put our music out at the various elementary stores. Do that for one year, two years tops. I think the kids would be better if they stay elementary, elementary. I don't even make it as six at the junior high. It's a different mentality among students. I have seen it. I, I, I know what happens. I know what the coverages are like during lunches. I know what the coverages are like during when you pick them outside. I know what the coverage is like when you can't find substitutes. I'm telling you, if you put fourth grade up here, you're actually creating more problems than you solve. And additionally, it doesn't say anywhere any of the stuff of when the remodel of the junior high is going to take place, which I would hope is taken into account, air conditioning. But now you're taking sixth grade students upstairs to the seventh and eighth, and the second floor with heat rising. We've already had problems. We've had to get the students out of the building, over to central administration because it's gotten too hot in the building. You're actually adding more kids to it, up in the heat. That is the most I have to say at this point other than, when you do the new building, because I know in the building, at least one is not being attached, but it should not be physically attached to the junior high. If you're going to attach to the junior high, then you should have security, the same as it is now. If you go from the junior high to the elementary, elementary has to physically buzz you in, or the other way around. It should not be a free flow. That's what I have to point out.
Thank you. Anyone else to see? Yes.
If you guys close up all of here now, or you're sitting up here, is there a future plan, closure plan without man in the ground?
There's been preliminary conversation on options, but nothing has been determined. I think once the, the district chooses an option, then more serious conversation will take place regarding what's done with that building. There have been multiple conversations about possibilities and options, and I think that once the decision's made, we will continue to explore those. But at this point, it's only been options and conversation at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you planning to close down Kane Road next year?
No.
No? So, the kids could still go to fourth grade there? If you're not closing it down, will there still be room there?
So, we're out of room at both Margaret Ross and Kane Road. So, we would have to make several different adjustments if, in fact, the fourth grade remained. And we would, there, there would be a lot of concessions in terms of what we typically do, but we could make that happen. But Kane Road would not close until there was another building for all students to go into. Typical building projects would be at minimum two and a half years to three years, so I wouldn't see the closure of Kane Road being until two and a half, three years down the road, and that's the earliest. Is there room there? No, there would need to be a lot of different decisions made in order to continue having the growth that we have coming into kindergarten, as well as all of the grade levels that are coming through. So, next year, right now, we have four first grade sections and fourth, I'm sorry, first grade and second grade sections. Those will become second and third, and possibly kindergarten as well. So, as they continue to matriculate through the grade levels, we need more space for that. But if that's the board's decision to wait, then, then we will step back, and, and we will look at what options those, those would entail.
Wouldn't that be a better idea than trying to move all these kids? I mean, you have kids coming up to you and saying, I don't want to go to the junior high. How do you tell these kids that, well, I'm sorry, there's no room for them?
So, we would be looking at some class sizes upwards of thirty, and so that's something else is that the number of students per class that, that we might have to be dealing with. We'd also have to move certain programs out, or they would have to be displaced and not providing the same quality of education that, that we're providing now from our instructors. So, there's a lot of areas that we can explore. If that's the board's decision, then, then we'll look at that. But there are class size implications and instructional implications if we kept fourth grade in our, in our different grade levels.
Well, couldn't you be looking at that before the board votes?
We already have, and we've, we've expressed that in our presentations, as well as to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, previous meetings, we've talked about how the class sizes in the junior high would actually clap a little bit, that they would be a little larger. So, if they're going to be a little larger, why wouldn't we leave them in the elementary schools where they're comfortable, until you have figured out the, the correct way and the proper way to instill this progress?
So, the majority of our class sizes in the elementary, except for two grade levels within the three elementaries, are roughly around twenty to twenty-five students. So, moving the fourth grade up here, it would be at twenty-five, which is what we have currently in many of our fourth grade classes. So, we're still in that range that we like to keep at twenty to twenty-five. So, that would be something that, that would remain the same. That's not outside of what we would have if they would remain in their elementary schools as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we're not ready to vote on the fourth grade move tonight because we need more information, are we also delaying the BEBH study option vote? Because that's a lot more nebulous to me than fourth grade move. So, are we voting on that tonight?
Yes. Do you want to answer that, John?
Sure.
So, for those of you who didn't hear, the question was, if we are delaying the fourth grade move tonight, are we also going to delay the vote on which option that has arisen out of the feasibility study we may select? And the answer is no. As we've explained at a number of these meetings, the options that have been provided to us out of the feasibility study are just conceptual options. They're broad, they're, they're looking at this in, in broad terms. This isn't something that we're going to be, you know, breaking ground on anytime soon, and what choosing an option will allow us to do will to see some potential options, which, you know, could include a K through four building. It could include a K through three building, like was presented as part of the feasibility study. It does not lock us into a location of one building. It does not lock us into whether it is attached to the junior high or not, but it will allow us to look at different options. Correct.
I'd like to say to the, the people that represent Independents and Raccoons specifically, if you vote for an option to consolidate the elementary schools with a massive monolith with, you know, six to nine elementary classes, you are not voting in the interest of the students that you represent.
I would like to thank the school board for the land of vote, and also Bethany for doing what she did. I think that was a huge concern, was all the questions, and maybe that's some of what you just touched on. Since there's no study, there's no way to tweak everything. Going back to the previous person about the, I understand we have a population problem. We have room in this school. Why we have room in this school, what mistake that this school got so big is interesting, but I just do, I, I agree, totally agree with her. I've been through this school system. I had anxiety when I was a fifth grader coming up here, but I was, I handled it, you know, I got through it. I couldn't imagine doing that a year earlier. It's, it's just a big jump. I don't like the whole school within a school thing. It's catchy, it's, it's, it's much like upper elementary. It's, are, are we going for, we can take a triangle block of wood and try to reinvent the wheel next. I mean, elementary should be elementary. I agree, Hopewell has good teachers. I really appreciate you guys thinking on this more, but there's just certain things that the safety of a kid and what benefits them should come way before what benefits room at a school, or what a particular group of people want. I mean, I, I just want you to really take it all in and make the best decision, and delaying it was a start, so thank you for that. And, yeah, it's just, it's, it's too early. I mean, I, I, that's what it comes down to. Teachers are great. They can't be everywhere. They can't see anything. Their job is to teach, and they do a great job watching over the kids as they can. Same with the bus drivers. If you bring the fourth grade into here, it's just added stress, just the downpositions alone. It's, I couldn't even imagine. And then, one kid gets hurt, one, in any way, whether it's physically, emotionally, I mean, that's, I, I, us as parents have to put it, deal with it at home, but I'm sure gins wouldn't feel great about that. If it comes back that a fourth grader gets tumbled on the school bus, I'm sure anybody that looks yet for this is, I mean, I'm sure it's going to bug you. I mean, I just, I just hope you guys really think everything through, that's all. But thank you.
Well, we have the senior high, and it was option number five specifically. I know the architect, and I'm not sure if anyone on the board was saying, it was still very fluid, because, you know, then you start talking about building here, most of it's only here at Margaret Ross. In that, in that grand scheme of fluidity, has it ever been discussed moving seventh and eighth to Margaret Ross? Everyone else saying here, K and six?
There's no...
I mean, that was awful lot of problems, to say.
There's not room at Margaret Ross. There's only ten classrooms. There would not be room for...
So, it was a small addition?
There's not even room for kindergarten, for all of our kindergarten students at Margaret Ross right now. So, there's, it's not enough for even one grade level.
Well, it was a small addition.
That could be something that we could explore, absolutely.
I have another question. Will there be another community meeting for the residents of the township who will be funding this project, seeing as that that worry fit need was not advertised to non-earths?
Are you talking about?
I, there's going to be another community meeting that's open to township residents, who will be ultimately funding this next phase. who will be ultimately funding this design?
About the overall feasibility, about option five or option seven?
Yeah, so February 15th meeting was a great meeting, you knew about it.
So, the design phase has multiple, multiple folks who would be giving input, from staff to community members to parents. So, there'll be multiple ways for folks to give input over the next year as that design phase goes on.
Prior to the vote, or no? Prior to the vote on which option?
No, so it would be for an option, and then it begins in the design phase, and then it would be exploration of what folks would like to see more.
So, the board was not interested in community feedback to make that decision, correct?
No, that's not what we said.
Okay, so you have a community meeting that wasn't advertised? If you are not a parent in an elementary school, you have no idea what's going on?
The community meeting that you're referring to was advertised at every board meeting leading up to it, there were three of them.
Yeah, but not to non-parents, residents of the townships who came to this.
Like me.
I resented the impression that meeting.
And you.
For parents and non-parents.
I didn't catch the last part.
I resented the impression that that community feedback meeting was for residents of the township.
It was.
But if you're not a parent, how would you have known if there's going on?
We advertised it, at three different board meetings.
At the board meetings, you're saying?
Yes.
So, okay, so you expect a non-parent who's not at the board meeting.
It was also.
Who doesn't have a child in this school, so seek that out on the off-chance that they find somebody that might have came to that meeting.
It was also on the website for a month and a half.
Again, most of the parents in this school didn't even know this was happening.
What I hear in your question is that, are these choices going to affect community taxes, right? So, is that even known at this point? Or do you have to, like, choose a choice and then start moving down the line to see actually how much that choice is going to cost first?
That is correct. So, as part of the design phase is that we would move forward with identifying location, what that would look like. There would be pricing attached to that, as well as funding attached to that. And then, there is a community meeting that has to be advertised, it's by law through PDE, and it is a large meeting where everybody in the community is welcome to make comments. We present everything, we present the funding, but in order to do that, you have to have an exact project. And right now, there's only a concept, because there needs to be at least a decision on what concept that the board would like to move forward. So, to answer your question, all of that will happen, but we need to have an actual project, and we don't have one right now, it's still in design.
So, you have to vote on a concept before you have any idea how much anything would cost, before then you can begin to figure out how much or if taxes would have to be raised to pay for everything, correct?
No, that's not entirely true, though, that's not what you said two meetings ago. Two meetings ago, the note said, parents, the additional tax increase would be at least $200 a taxpayer. Is that not true?
That is based on estimates on a concept. So, once again, we're looking at, everything is very conceptual right now. There are estimates in terms of all of the pricing, and that was explained by our architects, that there were not specifics, so that's why there's design then.
But you're specifically looking at $7 million to $80 million project, is that not true? So, we know those numbers generally.
If, in fact, the board chose to do everything in terms of concept that they're looking at over a decade of time, then the estimates that we've been given, you are correct, it's over $70 million. And then, the question has to be, how do we chunk that? What does that look like? And then, how do we pay for that with our funding?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
A couple things that bothered me through the process. First of all, I'm always amazed that all of our buildings are in such disrepair. I don't understand how, we operate on a budget, I assume, every year, just like we do at our homes. How do you let every building get to the state where we have water running down, and electrical core, and everything else, all at once? I would hope, going forward, we have a better plan of maintenance. We're moving children into this building, where I understand things are pretty bad already, but we're waiting already to move people in here next year, at least, considering. Also, I have the feeling that today, we all complain about kids are growing up so fast, too fast, they're in trouble so much, the social media, everything else. So, let's take our third graders and put them in with all of this, but they'll be segregated by the invisible screen on the buses and in the cafeteria. And thirdly, if we are spending upwards of $70 million, this is an opportunity to do it correctly, not as a Band-Aid approach, with putting a little bit of the grades here and some other grades up here. My daughter's in first grade, she's going to be in a construction building all of her school years in Hopewell. Because by the time you finish with the elementary, she's going to be going to the junior high, where you're going to be, you know, taking care of that, because she moves on to the senior high, where we're not taking care of that. If you're spending my money and you're going to raise my taxes no matter what, do it correctly. Do not rush, do not put a Band-Aid on it, do it correctly. Elementary students should be with elementary. Give our other students the proper buildings that they deserve also, all along, and that all of us, I feel, deserve to go repay the taxes anyway. Just my thought.
I'd like to know what the basic, like, what's our budget like? I've got to know my budget at home, can be tight. What is Hopewell's budget? I would think we don't have a lot of money to work with, because we don't have a taxpayer. So, when you're looking at these programs, are you looking at it from a school board who doesn't have a lot of money to work with? Or are you looking at it for the best thing for kids? And I know they're all good people, you want the best thing for kids. But you know, we live in Hopewell for a reason, we like Hopewell. It's a good place, with good people. If we wanted to live in Center, we wanted to live in Moon, and have these big schools, kids would have gone there. But a lot of our graduates came home because they like it here, and they like the values that we have. And I'm not sure that you all are listening. I'm proud that we have a lot of Hopewell alumns that chose to come back and build houses, and they made decisions about what they're going to do. And I, I just don't know that there's a big trust factor. I know I'm going all over the place here, but there's not a big trust factor. I, for one, I feel like you all know what you're going to do, when you're going to do it, and I believe you put it, give the wheels in motion already. I hate to say that, but that's what I really feel. All these people are here, putting their emotions out there, their heart, their feelings, and I see stone faces, and I feel like you're here because you have to have meetings, but I'm not so sure that you're feeling.
Hey, let me have that, let me have that. Ms. Ref, I'm going to just speak from my perspective, okay? The last thing, the last thing. Look, the last thing you said really bothered me, okay? I understand that there's disagreements, and we do value the feedback that we get. But we're not just here because we have to have meetings. I don't give up the amount of time that I give up to do this, because, you know, for no other reason than I care about what happens to the kids of this district. Okay, I moved here, as you know, I brought my family to Hopewell. So, the number one priority of the people on this school board is what is best for our students. There may be disagreements about what is best, and that's great. And we've got a lot of great feedback from people in this room about how to do things better, whether it be with the 4th grade move, or the overall feasibility study options and which way we're going to go. But we all care about the community, whether it be a taxpayer, whether it be a parent of a kid that's going to a school, whatever the case may be, that, we are all part of it, we care about it. We may disagree about what's the best way to go forward, but please, there's like a sentiment to a lot of these comments that we don't, and that's not the case.
But do you listen to people that, did you ask people if they like neighborhood schools?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not just Darren, I give you an exception, in a good part. But seriously, like, maybe people like their neighborhood schools here, maybe they like that. Then maybe we could send out a poll to every taxpayer and parent in Hopewell. And I, and I don't mean, like, obviously, you all don't get paid for this, and Darren, I know that you've talked a lot to people, but, like, there's already things in place here for 4th graders to move up. Have you not moved teachers to new classrooms to make way for 4th graders? That's true.
No.
No.
They're teachers.
No.
But things are in place.
And they're paying the labor. Things are in place.
Okay. Darren, I apologize.
No, don't.
I have a question. You say you care about the taxpayer, who aren't fixed incomes. I know kids are. But this is, our taxes are getting out of hand. I'm sorry, I don't know what you expect us to do.
Making a fiscally responsible.
I can't hear you.
Making a fiscally responsible decision is important to us. It is.
Well, you're not promising it's going to maybe go up by $200.
That was an example, I don't think we can even make.
Well, example, you're probably going to double that.
I don't think we can say, I don't think we can honest, we can't say how much is going to go, because we don't have a lot to go.
I just want to guess, you know and I know, it's going to go up, and it's going to hurt the retirees of this town, and it's going to hurt the people that aren't fixed incomes.
Well, I can promise you that the tax implications of this is a concern, it's something that we take.
But it's still going to happen, because you have money.
If we build a building, well, let me make, let me make this clear, if we do, if we do nothing.
Well, let me ask you something again.
Sure.
You're talking about building a building. When I see, I work here, when I look around, it's ridiculous. The doors are being painted, it looks like a circus, every hall's a different color, the beautiful library looks like an institution. That is a waste of taxpayer money, an absolute waste. It's not fixing the problem, it's not fixing the problem. You put cameras in that cost $700,000. Every officer and detective, I talk to, has said, they are worthless, they are after the fact. Cameras only going to be available after the fact. It will not stop anybody from coming to any door after the fact. Yesterday places were cameras, but not $700,000.
I, my name is Nick Marle, and I just wanted to basically take a moment and, basically say, have we ever sat in front of a room full of people who are angry at us? All the time? So, I think, I think it's unfair of the board to say that they do not have our best, the community's best interest in mind, and to accuse them of saying, "Your mind is made up, and we come in with our minds made up." My plea would be for all of us to have a little bit of an hope in mind. And part of it, I mean, I've sat through a whole lot of these meetings, listening to us demonize 8th graders. I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and a three and a half year old, all who will also be going through all of the schools with all sorts of changes. And I don't believe it's in the best interest for our student population as a whole to demonize certain age groups, because that word also gets out to 8th graders, saying, "Do you know what the parents think of us?" And so, I would ask that we could be charitable in our conversations, in our discussions, to assume that, no, they haven't made up their mind, and that this isn't just simply them doing their due diligence, because that's what we have to do. If they're going to have an open mind and say, "Okay, hey, we'll listen to the community and weigh in most," I think that we owe them the same respect to say, "Hey, let's not come in with our minds made up," and maybe they do kind of care about us. That would be my hope and prayer for all of us as we continue in our conversations.
I want to demonize 8th graders, there's five kids, there's five 8th graders, there's five.
There's that 4th grader.
Yes, exactly, there's five kids or five kids, they do exist, but I just, there's nothing, you're totally right, that's how that comes across. But I'm just saying, it's more of an age happening, where a nine-year-old is, I don't care if it's the biggest nine-year-old, then he's not going to be able to defend himself in any way, shape, or form, verbally or physically.
Right, I have a kindergartner who, sometimes we have to pry off our leg, probably to the school in a way, which I'm sure all of you have had that experience at some point, but she's afraid of 4th graders. She's afraid of other kindergartners, right? So, to say that 4th graders are going to be scared of 8th graders is to say that kindergartners aren't afraid of 4th graders if they're running with us, and I find that not to be the case either, from my experience. So, I, I just, my hope is that we would be charitable for all ages and grades, and understand that there are plenty of opportunities for older kids to look out for younger kids, and also for us to try to be as good of the parents as we can, as our kids are going to have to learn how to navigate a rapidly changing world earlier than we have experienced this case.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm coming to this discussion kind of you. Can you help me understand how many years it's been that you knew, growth projection-wise, we were going to find ourselves in the current situation?
So, our, the birth projections from PDE were for the past two years that they started to spike. And it was an anomaly, because that was not something that we were looking at, and so we waited two years ago to look at, is what they're saying actually going to happen? Because we wanted to make sure, there are a lot of other factors, so we looked at that. And then, the following year, the same was true, because we were concerned that they had incorrect information, and what they were, they were sharing with us was not going to be accurate. So, two years of data has said they were, they were accurate.
Okay, so the question I have in follow-up is how do we know in two years that the state is going to push the help of the school district on us, and Southside Beaver isn't going to fail because of the loss of the power plants, and we're going to be looking at both of them, holding their hands up, and saying, "We want to be Vikings"? What's your answer to that?
I have not been approached by the state, there's not been any formal conversation about any of that. I have heard those same things, and I've heard them for quite some time. So, what you're hearing is probably about as much information that I've been able to gather myself. There's nothing, at least from any legislator, from PDE, or anyone that I've heard, to substantiate anything that you have shared or that I have heard.
Well, you better talk to the people in Southside, because those teachers are scared to death about being furloughed. They don't have any money coming once those plants go down. They're next to us, where are we thinking they're going to want to come to? This is the globally district they're landlocked with. If that were to happen, where is your plan then?
Yes, ma'am.
I currently have a son that's in the 3rd grade. You guys want to get this done because home is boiling so much? How are these kids that are now in 3rd grade going to get acclimated, do you think, to coming up here in two and a half months? When they're in the 4th grade and they come up here, they have a whole year to come up. How are we going to get my son ready? What are we going for these kids?
So, we, we have plans, we have multiple field trips, we have multiple opportunities for them to come up. We also have multiple opportunities for us to support them in the classroom, and we're actually meeting with 3rd and 4th grade teachers this Thursday to talk about that further, and to talk about specific students who need additional needs. So, those are all things that we'll be sharing in March, even further.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to be back off of this question, Nick. I think that I personally feel that it's admirable to want to be on the school board. I think that I personally feel that it's admirable to wanna be on the board, and it ain't fun when it comes to this kind of thing. And I appreciate that you guys are, in the main that you're hearing us, and I feel it's important responsibility across the district to really nail this down. I am and have been a supporter of this plan since December. I just am not a supporter of their, your timeline and, and the details so far. But I think what we as parents are missing is knowing how the board members actually feel because I have been to every meeting since the beginning of January, and there are two members on the board who have also been to every meeting, Kathy O'Black and Darren Newberry. I know Matt Erickson has been available and acceptable to parents and, and the two I mentioned before that, but I watch.
I've been at every meeting too, I believe, haven't I?
No, you're not at the special education meeting.
No, I wasn't on it, it's special education.
Um, but they were all the board members there, I thought, from the academy. And I have appreciated the board members who have made themselves accessible. And that makes me have trust and faith. The others, I don't know where he stand, I watcha watcha. So, I think it would be helpful to see some participation a- and to get kind of an inpatient on, um, I mean, you may very well have spent a whole year dedicated to all this stuff, and that's great, but we don't see that, and I think it would be helpful for people.
It is almost two, four years we've been dedicated to this and spent many hours. And we have locked the boiler rooms, and we have, and we've had our architects tell you all that twenty years ago, these buildings were all renovated, touched. And at the time, the board at that time, we believed they spent their money wisely, and they got us another twenty years. They didn't touch things twenty years ago that today are at end of life. And you're talking about putting a Band-Aid on things, I mean, we've been doing the roof patching in the last couple of years. Just to do nothing and accept either, like, forget these two options and do nothing, and just try to fix the things that are wrong, that are at end of life in the infrastructure in these buildings. You're gonna spend millions. You're gonna spend thirty-five million to put a Band-Aid on it. Why not go more up towards sixty-five million and let's give room to our children, and let's give air conditioning to our children? I mean, that's my feeling, and let me tell you, I have five kids, I have eleven grandchildren. My little one, my littlest one, who is really little, is probably gonna end up on a screw bus going from here to Independence if we close Canton Road down. And taking round bus rides. I'm not happy about that, I'm not happy she's not gonna have her school that's two blocks away anymore. We are trying to do what is fiscally responsible for the district, for the community, and our first priority is our children here. And that's why we have been here, all of us, for two years in meetings, many meetings, sometimes at seven-thirty in the morning, tours of all these buildings. And, um, I mean, and I've been doing it for eighteen years. Yes, ma'am.
So, you're saying things are coming to the end of life, so what are you gonna do about the buses? Because the buses are beyond the end of their life.
Yeah, we might have to buy a couple new buses, right, Dr. Miller?
A couple? I, I think we need more than a couple. I've been experiencing a problem for probably the last two months. So, what am I supposed to tell my students when they get on the bus and ask why we are flip-flopping between buses daily? Today, I got my bus back, I got it back on Friday afternoon, and it's broke down again this afternoon, before this afternoon. So, then the kids get on, and they're like, where's fifty-one, where's fifty-one? And there's several parents in this room that see me driving these buses daily, and I have a different bus constantly. I'm constantly moving my belongings out of the bus, putting them out of line. That is, a sub bus that shouldn't even be on the road probably itself because the buses are so bad. Our buses are beyond graveyard material, they're just putting Band-Aids on them to get them out there, to get the students back here. And you want them back safely, but our buses are not up to safety standards.
Thank you for that information.
So, with that budget, how many buses are in the budget to get?
So, each year, we purchase at least two to three buses and typically several vans. Um, we have a list of those buses who, that, that have needs right now, and that we'll make sure that those are the first ones replaced. Buses typically last approximately ten years, but we always look at mileage and, and their status as well. And so we'll look at the number that, that we need and, and we'll go there, that's what we do each and every year, and we're always retiring the buses and we're getting new ones. So, I'll specifically look on fifty-one and find out what the issues are with your bus.
Well, we have, that's, we're supposed to get new buses, but we haven't. Our buses, yeah, we have new mechanics now, just recently, but the prior mechanics didn't work on the buses, and that's why they're so bad. So, we need more than two or three buses a year to make up for the prior years they've never been replaced. I mean, if you look in the lot, we have buses that are sitting down there that are parts buses that they're taking the parts off to try to be part of the run. And only with that, you guys are gonna improve the school district with the buildings. But our garage is in horrible shape. Um, you can't even put a big bus in there, work on it, with the door shut, so they're letting out in the weather. You just replace our roof with a Band-Aid, our parking lot is horrible, we have drivers falling and getting hurt on the ice. I mean, this is a lot of stuff that needs to come to play too, and then you wanna spend all the seventy, eighty million dollars here and leave us in horrible conditions.
Just, all of the, all of the options involve.
The bus.
Upgrading, in some, in some options even moving the bus garage to.
Right, but are you gonna, are you gonna be able to upgrade enough buses to run this, to get them? You wanna have these designated stops. You want us to pay buses, you're talking, some people are saying we're gonna have fourth and fifth grade on a bus, seventh and eighth grade on a bus. Right now, our buses can't run like that. I mean, they're, they're that bad. And I think the community needs to know that, people are paying their tax dollars, and we're not getting any new buses.
So, just like we always have been, we'll, we will be buying new buses this coming year. We'll replace the ones that are in the worst shape, and that's something that we've done each and every year. I'll look specifically on your particular bus, but the other piece is, is that in the morning, we have looked to be able to add four different buses, they already have bus runs, they just don't have possibly the, the junior high bus run, and so we're extending that to divide, um, at least two-hundred-and-fifty students on the morning run, um, to have se- um, seventh and eighth grade runs as well as fourth through sixth grade. That's only four additional runs, and we already have those bus runs, it would be attached to an already established bus run. They have already looked at all of those runs and we have those created.
Okay, so I have another question. Where are we getting our drivers from, are we gonna keep asking Fry for drivers?
That's a problem in every school district, all fourteen.
Well, you're gonna wanna add more runs, but we don't have the drivers. Fry, if you look at our parking lot, we have Fry buses in there, I feel like I should come to work with a Fry show every day because there's, it, it seems like they're taking over, you guys don't answer that question either, is if Fry's gonna take over, if they're gonna be contracted out. Yeah, you know, you know us saying about that. But they're the ones that come in, if we don't have a driver, they call Fry. Frankie has already told us, she's begging to call Fry and ask for a driver, how does that make us look? Doesn't make us look very good. I guess I don't do this.
I, I, I mean, every district is looking for drivers, we're, everybody's having the same problem.
Do you know anybody who wants a drive?
So, we continually advertise, we continually train, and we continually try to, to get drivers, um, and to keep drivers. And so that's really important, we wanna make sure those in the seats are safe, they're comfortable, and so we've been doing a lot of training on a continuous basis. At the end of the day, when folks call off, when there isn't a driver for various reasons, either it's a medical leave, they call in sick, and students need to be transported, and we don't have any more sub-drivers, we subcontract for just that bus run that day. It's like we substitute, or we use our Kelly subs whenever we don't have teachers, um, and they've called off. So, we will continue doing that because at this point, without more drivers, um, even though we continually try to fill that pipeline, if they aren't there, then that's one of our options to use them.
Okay, so we have drivers that have come in, you've paid for them to get their CDL license, and they've up and left. There is no contract for them to stay with us for a year or whatever. There's been people that are a month that left, and they have a CDL license and they're going somewhere else. So, why are we not enforcing anything for them to have to stay with us in our.
We can definitely explore that, if that's something we wanna do, um, but there's other places that will train and not have a contract, so folks would go elsewhere, we hope to keep them here, we hope to, to make them comfortable and want them to be part of the Hopewell team.
Okay, now we have Sherry who has gone, who used to teach them. So, who's gonna teach them and, um, take them for their CDL class?
That's Kevin Schofield, who, he's our transportation director at this time, and he is a, um, one of our certified trainers, and he continues to do that. And we also have other people that can be training as well, but we have that lined up.
And train them and sign off on them, so.
So, that was the same with Sherry, and we have that lined up as well, we have the person to sign off, and then we have the trainer as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I've heard you just say that this has been in the process for the past two years. This has been something that you've walked the halls, you've talked about, you've all been in negotiations, you've all spoke about this. If it's been in talks for two years, why did we just find out about it? Why, why the rush? I, because we all know that we have to consolidate, and I wonder, I, I understand, and I, I agree with you. But if we had to consolidate, and we knew about it for this long, why all of a sudden did you tell us about it in January? You didn't give our students, our children, any notice of this, so we can prepare as parents.
It was right before that that all the options were shown to us.
We had to wait for the options to be pulled.
The architect to do their study.
So, so you had multiple options.
But you, you as a school board could have notified us as parents, correct?
I don't know what we're gonna notify you of, what, if we had no idea what we were gonna do.
You were looking into it. Yeah, you were, you were on for two years.
Are you, are you, are you talking about the fourth grade move?
Yes, I am.
She was not talking about the fourth grade move.
Well, that's, it, it, that's what it sounded like to me.
No, no, no.
This was something that was in negotiation for.
No, no, no. The feasibility study.
Oh.
Not the fourth grade move.
Well, when was the parents or community notified of the feasibility study?
We, we had presentations of.
Like in the community, like a community forum?
It's part of a school board meeting.
Twice a month.
They're posted on the website.
And, and they've been on the website for, dating back to last year. Like spring, like last spring.
There, there's a hand in the back. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Paul Armour, crackhead county councilor, I left here around two weeks ago. Uh, some questions, one is, I mentioned the Ingram-Danford Association did the last study to close crackhead county council back in nineteen, uh, twenty, twenty years ago.
That was the Danford study.
That's correct. Uh, concerns to this. Is it possible, before the next meeting, that somehow the residents of Hopewell County can see what that study was, and see the states and flaws that they made to close crackhead county council and say that our involvement is going to go down? That being said, uh, it's impossible, since this is a pretty big, um, expense to the, the district. Since we saw that one company made such a runny error, everybody can agree with it, it's been about ten years.
I don't know the.
It was stopped the last year, you guys probably had your studies behind the country reported. Wouldn't it be feasible to have another company come in and give you a second opinion? That would make it easier for the officials to follow the, the spending fees. Also, is there any federal programs out there to help us? Because the states are talking through here, and your county is also getting reassessed. So, not only is it gonna have rate tax in Hopewell for this whole district, it's all gonna be rate for the county, for a lot of residents who are rate. And I think that maybe doing this off, I, here's something. I get involved with Canton Road with, with the health issues, the whole, whatever else may be going on. That would be my opinion, actually, whether or not, there's other options to do a temporary ability, those stay in, to at least make sure that this decision we're making is the correct one to be spending a lot of money. And that's just my opinion on that, and, uh, if rate taxes and county reassessments and hits his heart, people will move to Washington County, they will move to Hopewell County. It, it's just, I just don't wanna see that. I love this school district, I love the teachers in this school district, I think they do an awesome job, and I just don't wanna see anybody jump rash conclusions without having all the facts and maybe we'll reach out and say, hey, you guys can give us a second opinion. Sorry for interrupting your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you all. Um, moving on with the rest of our meeting, I'd like to move on to committee discussion and recommendations. Mr. Winkle.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobo. Can, can everybody hear me? Are we good now? There we go. Um, thank you, Ms. Dobo. Under education, curriculum, and instruction, uh, we have a recommendation. Uh, well, okay, that first recommendation, I know you'd say nothing to table, do the.
Yes, so item number one is tabled.
Item number one, restructure the limo of the elementary schools that's been tabled, March the nineteenth. Uh, recommendation on item two, a request of the seniors class to hold baccalaureate on June third, two thousand twenty, at six P M. in the auditorium.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
We have a recommendation on the Viking Connect, the district's one-to-one computer initiative.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
We have a recommendation on the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you, anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
We have a recommendation on a cyber services agreement with the Central Valley School District for a five-year term beginning two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, and a two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year at a cost of twenty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars per year.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion carries.
We have a, uh, recommendation for the eighth grade field trip to Washington, D.C. focused on the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Winkle. Um, under athletics, Mr. Payton?
Thank you, Mrs. Dobo. Recommendation to approve the following, request of Central Valley School District for students from Central Valley Middle School Swim Team to practice with the Hopewell Junior High School Swim Team for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand season, two thousand twenty season.
Second.
Thank you, anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved, thank you, Mr. Payton.
You're welcome.
Moving on to buildings and grounds, Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Ms. Dobo. Um, a recommendation to approve the following. Uh, first, the selection of option five from the V E H feasibility study for further analysis and planning by the school board. And, uh, just to reiterate something we said earlier, um, this really is just a conceptual vote, and the next phase would be over a year, year and a half, um, and, and not something we would do right away.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Oh, I, I need a roll call, thank you.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. McKittrick?
Yes.
Mr. Newberry?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Obalad?
Yes.
Mr. Santina?
Yes.
Mr. Winkle?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Dr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
And second is a request of Beaver County Flight Football to use Tony Dorset Stadium on Saturday afternoons from one to four P M beginning April eighteenth until June thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Moving on to finance and budget, Mrs. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobo. The recommendation to approve the following. Payment of bills, A and B, and payments to be ratified, C, as listed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. We have a roll call, Mrs. Dobo.
We're gonna change one. Item number C is actually, payments to be ratified is the general fund to be ratified, not capital reserve fund.
Okay. Okay.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Mr. Newberry.
Yes.
Mrs. Obalag.
Yes.
Mr. Santia.
Yes.
Mr. Winkle.
Yes.
Mr. Payton.
Yep.
Dr. Erickson.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Dobo.
Yes.
Motion carries?
Number two is a four-year agreement with Questet to provide technology, staffing, and support beginning July one, two thousand twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Here we have a roll call, Mrs. Dobo. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Newberry.
Yes.
Mrs. Obalag.
Yes.
Mr. Santia.
No.
Mr. Winkle.
Yes.
Mr. Payton.
Yes.
Dr. Erickson.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris.
No.
Mrs. McKittrick.
No.
Mrs. Dobo.
Yes.
Motion carries?
And the last one is the request of John Rager to purchase tax parcel sixty-five oh oh five one oh oh nine oh 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 located in Hopewell Township out of repository. The two thousand eighteen and prior years taxes shall be exonerated.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobo.
On legislative, Miss Sobel.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobo. Recommendation to approve the following. Adoption of resolution calling for charter school funding reform. We all have a copy that was given to us. And this resolution is really to help our public school children to receive similar amount of money that charter schools receive. They receive a lot more money for their funding for students than public education. They're trying to redo the formula in order to make us be able to get more money for our students.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the next?
Exactly.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion carries?
Mrs. Dobo, I have one more thing.
Yes.
There are nine members of Congress who signed on as cosponsors for House Bill eighteen-seventy-eight that concerns Special Education Act. And our congressmen in the House of Representatives signed on. I would like the school board to also, or Hopewell School District, to sign on to that as cosponsors.
Yes, could I do that? Thank you. Dr. Nilla, get that information for us.
Thank you.
Mrs. McKittrick. Moving on to personnel, Dr. Erickson.
Presidentation of employment for Allison Slumner as a long-term substitute school counselor at Junior High School effective January thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Do a second?
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion approved.
Second, a request to Steve Weber to be a substitute bus driver effective January sixth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Weber wishes to remain a substitute transportation agent.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion carries?
Request of Brenda LeBelen to be a substitute bus driver in aid effective February nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion approved.
Change of employment status for James Schlesky from substitute transportation aide to permanent transportation aide effective January thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion approved.
Change of employment status for Nancy Heskey from transportation aide to permanent bus driver effective February eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Second?
Do we have a second? Catherine? Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
Number six, free coaches and salaries, considered patches.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion approved.
Second, appointment of Mike Schlesky to volunteer baseball coach effective February twenty-fifth, two thousand one.
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
Number eight, resignation of Duck Road Assistant High School Principal on or around May fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Sadly, second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved.
And last, resignation of Amy Shaughnessy, Special Education Feature, effective March thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Erickson. Moving on to transportation, Mr. Payton.
Thank you again, Mrs. Dobo. Recommendation to approve items one and two. Request by Hopewell Township to use district van for rec on the run from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty, to August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at no cost to the district. And also request by Hopewell Township to use the district buses and bus drivers for Hopewell Park Fest Community Day on July eleventh, two thousand twenty, at no cost to the district.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to vote no or abstain? Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Payton. At this time, we would have superintendent's report?
No report this evening, Mrs. Dobo.
Thank you. Solicitor's report?
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. During no further business, I'd like to announce that our upcoming meetings will be March ninth, regular work meeting in the junior high cafeteria here. March twenty-third, regular business meeting and central administration. I also need to announce that we had an executive session prior, it was held prior to this meeting to discuss personnel issues. This announcement is being made to be in compliance with Act eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. Pennsylvania's sunshine law has amended. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.